Common council meeting of the City of Milton to order Wednesday, April 6, 2016 at 7:00 PM. Can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
The meeting was noticed here at City Hall, the Piggly Wiggly and Dave's Ace Hardware.
Item number two, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We have an agenda. Item number three, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. We'll take a brief break.
Everybody can have a chocolate now.
Everybody can have a chocolate. Dave?
Yeah, he's here.
Okay, approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any questions or further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number five, discussion and possible action regarding approval of the bond amounts for ordinance 415, an ordinance regulating the use of telephones for emergency calls as proposed by our municipal judge Kristin Kessler.
Okay, so this is actually a follow-up to ordinance 415 where the judge is now set an actual, what would you say? The fees, the fines that would be set for this ordinance.
Is there any questions? Okay, can I get a motion? To approve the bond amounts for ordinance 415.
To approve the bond amounts for ordinance 415. Thank you.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number six, discussion and possible action regarding approval of resolution 2016-09, final resolution vacating portion of Greenman Street and amending official city map.
This is the final step in the process that we began last month regarding the vacation of that portion of Greenman Street that runs between North Janesville and Parkview Drive. This is in reference to the redevelopment of the Milton East parking lot that was reviewed at last month's meeting. We introduced the preliminary resolution at last month and this is the final resolution. So it's a two-step process and this is the final step that would vacate that portion of Greenman Street and officially amend our city map to take that off of the public right-of-way.
We've had the Parker Pen or the...
Credit Union.
Correct. Yeah. They have agreed that it's okay for that one way, you know, cutting off that parcel.
Right. Right. They were, they've agreed to this and in fact, they were here, they were present for plan commission on another item and I spoke with their CFO again about it. In, moving forward, once this is vacated, they will enter into an agreement with the school district to allow access to be granted upon the former right-of-way of Greenman Street. That will come back to us as, that will be reviewed with plan commission because any easement that is recorded, regardless if we are not a party to it, would have to be recorded at the register of deeds and would have to follow the land division process. So that will come back to this body and to the plan commission, but yes, they are in agreement with it. That paperwork has already been drawn up, but they're waiting for this process to be completed.
Yeah, that was my concern. And then we, we had made, Chief Lauren, you said that it was okay as far as the fire trucks. That was all okay.
Okay, I move that we approve the final resolution, resolution 2016-09, vacating the portion of Greenman Street from North Janesville Street to Parkview Drive.
Second.
Mayor, then before we proceed, I just need to check in on something here specifically. The, as part of this, there is, there is a public hearing that, that occurs for the final resolution as we addressed in the preliminary resolution, that it would be to date. And I just wanted to see if the, that had been published. Okay, then.
No.
So this needs to be addressed after the public hearing?
Yes, that's, that's what it calls for. So normally we'd have the public hearing and then we'd address the final resolution immediately following the public hearing on that.
Even though we did that in plan commission?
The plan commission public hearing was on amending the official city map. And so I understand that that's been held correctly. So that, that part is done once you do the final resolution. So that public hearing is fine. That's where, and it's a bit confusing, I know. It's that, that part's for amending the city map. This, this is for vacating the street. It's a separate resolution or separate public hearing, excuse me, for that.
So we should table this until the sequence is correct?
Yes. What I would recommend, and again, I don't know that it's a huge rush and I just prefer that, you know, we cross all our Ts and dot our Is on this sort of thing, is that this would be continued for the publication of the class three notice, which is three times. And so we need to just calculate when that would be and set it for that, for the public hearing and then the resolution for that date then. The part about the amendment of the map is taken care of basically until the final resolution. That's fine. So we don't need to go in front of the plan commission. Just have that the notice published on that.
So we can, in short, we can continue this for final approval at the first meeting in May? Would likely, in order to meet that three-week, or three-notice?
Probably. Is that, what other is that right meeting? Because we need to have it, the last notice has to be at least seven days before the council meets.
So we can get it in to the paper on the 14th, the 21st, and the 28th? And then a week later would be May, May 10th? But I, I don't have the calendar. When's our next council meeting?
It would be, the next one would be May 17th.
For the 17th? Okay. That's what I would suggest, that there'd just be a motion to continue the final resolution until 17th, right? Okay.
Do you want to make that motion?
Yes.
We have to resend all the other motions first.
Yeah, either resend or vote down just because of that, yes.
Just resend it.
That would be the easiest, yes. So the person who moved and the second would withdraw, then that would be, that would be acceptable.
I'll withdraw.
I'll on the second. Good enough? Okay, and let's do the do-over.
I move then that we postpone making the final move until May, our May 17th movement, movement, or meet. Forget it, I won't be here. I don't care. Do whatever you want.
Has Teresa checked out? So the motion is to postpone the vote until the May 17th meeting. Okay. Is everybody clear on what they're voting on? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number seven, I think this will go much smoother. Discussion and possible action on the Arbor Day proclamation.
This is a proclamation that actually is part of a process, a longer process that we're starting to undertake about, in essence, really to try to become a Tree City USA. One of the requirements is that we do have an Arbor Day proclamation. So here is that proclamation. It can be read by the mayor.
Okay, proclamation for Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable source giving us paper wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim April 23, 2016, as Arbor Day in the City of Milton. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
And just so everybody is aware, this Arbor Day will coincide with our Make a Difference Milton Day and we will be planting four trees at the Tales and Trails Dog Park on Arbor Day, April 23, in addition to all the other activities that are taking place that Friday, Saturday, Sunday in, in response to the Milton Make a Difference Day, Arbor Day, and Earth Day celebrations. So, thank you.
Thanks. Okay.
I move that we approve the Arbor Day proclamation.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, Arbor Day is proclaimed officially. Item number eight, discussion and possible action on resolution 2016-10 to amend the City of Milton 2016 annual budget for historic preservation.
In case I miss any details, Dan can jump in as the finance director who amends the budget eventually. This is a slight amendment to the, the city's annual budget, which allows for $1,500 of unspent money from the 2015 Historic Preservation Committee to be carried over into 2016. This will provide funding for a variety of projects that are underway with the Historic Preservation Committee and would allow those to continue in 2016, including the Historic Walking Tour booklet guide and the Milton House magnets that they have put together. So this is not, this is not new money. It's money that was held over from last year that will be allowed to be budgeted this year.
Historically, this has occurred in previous years, so is there some way of making it in perpetuity so that we don't have to do this each year?
The process that I'm familiar with is at the end of the year, and it may be different in Milton. At the end of the year, when there's unspent funds, you declare those funds to be encumbered. And, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't eliminate this step, but it would identify it as part of the budget process earlier in the year. So I don't, I don't know if that answers your question, but that is, that's the process that I'm familiar with. But either way, the, the end result is the same. So we would need to just encumber those funds at the end of the year as part of our budget process if, if we so choose. My guess is some of these costs weren't known at that time, so.
Yeah, some of the projects were ongoing, so it was, if the year came and went without the...
Right.
And this process is much easier in the financial statements. Because once you start encumbering it, it involves a lot of extra work.
That's true.
As opposed to just recycling a memo.
Is that extra work for you, Dan?
Yes.
Let's do that, then.
New budget process. Okay, is there a motion?
I move that we approve resolution 2016-10 to amend the City of Milton 2016 annual budget.
For historic preservation.
For historic preservation.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Okay, item number nine, discussion and possible action regarding post-employment health insurance benefits.
Again, Dan can feel free to jump in at any time and as well as Inga. She has been very instrumental in this process. Previously, before, basically before Act 10, there was a stipulation within the employee handbook that provided for any full-time employee hired prior to 2008 would receive 85% coverage in their Tyrese Health Insurance until they became Medicare eligible. When Act 10 came into place, the handbook was rewritten and that portion of the handbook was removed due to the extensive financial liability that that placed on the city. It was a large liability that would have to be funded annually at a, at a, at a pretty high rate in order to cover that. So it was removed at that time with the understanding that it would be readdressed, that some modified plan would be brought forth. That was 2008, it's 2000, or that was 2010, 10-ish. It's now 2016. And it's one of the things that was brought to my attention right away when I came here. The folks at DPW asked about it. Took us a little bit of time to get there, but we are now there and we've brought, brought forth a plan to cover those 10 folks who are now non-represented, non-union employees who were affected by that change. Ultimately, what we've put forth is a plan that would allow those employees, those 10 affected employees to receive what we have kind of labeled as an upfront payment, which would take into account their years of service, in which they would be paid $800 a year for the, for the, their years of service up until the time that this is enacted. So each one would have an account that would have $800 times the number of years they were served. And that would be set aside in a post-employment healthcare. Post-employment healthcare plans are quite popular, especially in the private sector. They're starting to gain some traction in the public sector a little bit more. But these plans are important and it's one of the things that we heard a lot from the affected employees is they wanted control. They wanted control of this money so that future decisions made by future councils, nobody up here would do that, that's of course, couldn't take that away from them. And that is, that's a, that's something that I understand, that I could understand from their perspective. So we wanted to, to, to address that issue. Moving forward then, so they would have that initial upfront kind of, we'll call it account, set aside, that it's $800 times their number of years. They would receive an additional $800 on an annual basis, well, actually $66 on a monthly basis for their, for the rest of their employment here at the city. We estimate that cost to be, well, the total upfront cost would be $153,000, of which only $115,000 would actually be, go towards the general fund. The rest would come out of the water fund for the, for the two employees who are affected, who work in the water fund. And then there would be an annual kind of contribution of $6,400 to those, to those 10 employees moving forward until the time that they retire. This is a, from the city standpoint, this is a much more cost-effective way of, of handling that kind of outstanding liability, to fund it on a year-by-year basis, by kind of taking care of that upfront cost right off the bat and then handling it on a year-by-year basis after that. So it is much more cost-effective than what would have been the previous case before it was removed from the handbook in 2010. And it also makes good on what I believe was a promise that was made to these employees over a number of years that was never really made good on. I will say that, that this is not a benefit that, that is statutorily required, but again, I do feel it is one that was, was in essence, promised to these folks. Anybody hired after 2008, there's no change. They still receive the same benefit that they would have received under the employee handbook even post Act 10, which is, which is a much, much different employee benefit. It's what I receive and Inga receives and Dan. But this would satisfy those, well, I don't want to say the word satisfied. This will address the issue of those 10 employees who are still kind of left in limbo after the Act 10 legislation took effect. It certainly, you know, obviously we wish we could do more. We wish we could do more for all employees. But this was a compromise that we approached the 10 employees on who are affected by that and we did receive, you know, overall, pretty, pretty good feedback from the, from the group. So this is the plan that we brought forth. Again, it is, it is a compromise that, that, that we as the administration feel we can afford and, and those affected employees can, can now plan appropriately for their future, knowing what kind of benefit they have in place. And what's, what's important, I know I heard from them many times and what I can understand is that this is, this is kind of set in stone. So 10 years from now or five years from now, all of them, they'll all be gone in 10 years. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. Some of them will be gone. And when I say gone, I mean, I'm no longer on an employment with us. But it's, we've, we've had a number of conversations. We've gone through a couple of iterations of this plan. And I really appreciate the feedback that they gave us. It really changed a lot of the course of action that we took throughout this process in order to kind of get it to where we thought we could afford it and it, and it gave them an opportunity to plan for the future and also feel that they did have control over their own destiny. So that was the, the plan that's put forth and if, if there's questions from the council, certainly hopefully can answer those. But I, I do see it as, as, as close to a win-win as you can get.
Any comments from you?
Well, it was just money that was promised 25 years ago to us, you know? Trust us, we'll take care of it, you know? I mean, we're talking $503,000 that was supposed to have been set aside. It had 25 years of money mismanagement, you know? So what you're up against now is nothing more than trinkets for the council and the city, you know?
Well, I'm sorry that it took us, I'm sorry, I wasn't aware that it had been hanging out there for so many years. And I appreciate you all working with the staff to come up with something that probably isn't exactly what you wanted or exactly what you were promised. And I'm sorry that we all ended up in this situation. I hope it's something that we can all agree on and move forward. I know that this is, this is the best that we can do and I'm hopeful that the council will pass this. And please continue to communicate with us and, you know, work with us the best that we can because I think it's in everybody's highest and greatest good. And hopefully we'll get this resolved tonight. And thank you all for coming. I appreciate that.
The one, one last comment that I will make, well, two comments. One, I will reiterate again how well they, we got to work with, with the group of folks who were unfortunately affected by this and how understanding they were in this process. Obviously, they wanted the answer a long time ago and I'm glad we were able to reach it. But I, very rarely do I get political or have an opportunity to be political. But I will say that this is, this is a direct result of the damaging levy limit laws that we face as a local municipality, that we're not able to provide these benefits at a reasonable level. Because of the levy limit laws, we are not able to fund those types of post-employment healthcare plans or any kind of benefit level that folks became accustomed to and, and expected. And, and it's very frustrating for us on our side to try to manage these things in a responsible and reasonable way when we are faced with laws that are not reasonable and not responsible. So I, I, again, I really don't like to get political, but that is, it is a frustrating situation that, that we are forced into, that is outside of our control. And we see that through many walks of life, but this is one that is really, has faces and names associated with it that is very difficult. In order to fund this plan in the way that it previously was set up and, and one that was very reasonable then too, it would likely result in layoffs. It would be the only way we could do it. And this group understood that and, and was willing to work with us. So I appreciate that and that's probably as political as I'll get, at least in a public meeting.
Having dealt with the changes in Act 10 and the levy limits in a different public entity, I, I also have experienced the, the problems and do empathize with all that you've been through. On that note though, I would move that we approve the changes in the post-employment health insurance plan for those employed prior to 2008.
Second. There's a motion. There's a motion and a second. Is there any further comment, questions or discussion?
I guess I truly want to apologize for how the world has changed and how it's not changed in your favor. I hope this shows our appreciation, I mean, humble as it is, but we do appreciate that you got caught in the middle.
And I would also like to add, I'm very thankful that everybody came together and that we could work this out. And please do come forth with, if you have any issues or any concerns.
Anybody else? Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion unanimously carries. Thank you for coming and thank you for working with us. Discussion and possible action regarding the approval of updated City Hall job descriptions. And you can stay for this if you want to.
I think they should have to stay through T-Building.
Yes, you should.
Mike, what do you think before? The next item on the agenda is part of a, it's part of a larger process that, that I've been working with, with staff since, well, really probably since last summer and maybe, maybe even a little bit before that. There's been a substantial amount of turnover, as folks know, in City Hall. Jobs have changed, faces have changed, names have changed, positions have changed. And part of the processes through, through this was we wanted to make sure that the job descriptions still accurately reflected the duties that folks were doing. It wasn't that folks weren't doing their job, it's just their jobs had changed so much that their job descriptions weren't necessarily reflective of their jobs, tasks anymore. So in order to kind of reset the, the conditions, we had everybody go through a job analysis process. We sat down with each staff member at City Hall, kind of did a job interview, not, not an interview for their job, but a discussion about their job and their job tasks. So we could make sure, from my perspective, it really let me learn on, you know, in my first year as to what people's tasks are, where the roles and responsibilities lie, but also to make sure that we were, in fact, we were doing our tasks in the most effective manner, that there wasn't duplicity and under the worst case scenario, that there wasn't cracks created that, that things were slipping through, where someone thought, oh, so-and-so used to do this. I just assumed they were still doing it and they're not. So we went through this process to kind of review the job descriptions. Some of the job descriptions had major wholesale changes. I, one of the examples that we like to point out is that in Brenda's job description, she still had in there that she was in, to manage the city pound. So that, that's the kind of things that we hadn't, that we hadn't addressed in a while. So we went through this process, had everybody on City, City Hall staff review their job descriptions a number of times. And I think we're at a place where they accurately reflect the duties and tasks of the, of the jobs that they perform today. Now with that being said, I would like to make this part of an annual process where we review the job descriptions every year as part of my year-long kind of work plan process that I've implemented. We may not need to update them every year, but I want to make sure that they're looked at every year. And then Inga... at every year, and then Inga and I can kind of track that to make sure that we haven't kind of missed anybody for a 10-year period and they're in charge of the pound still. So that's the process, that's why this item is on the agenda tonight, and wanted everybody to kind of have an opportunity to take a look at it. One thing I will note in the memo, I did indicate that my job description was not part of this, but yes, it is. Inga reminded me that although I was hired and my job description was changed, and then there was actually a referendum by the people to change my job description, it was actually never formally adopted by this body, so we didn't put that back in. So it doesn't mean that I'm doing anything different, but we just wanted to make sure that it was, everybody had kind of an opportunity to go through this process, so. That's all I have.
So I have a question on the procedure for input from the council on your job performance. How does that work?
Well, this is simply, this is simply job descriptions.
Job descriptions.
And the opportunity for input was last October, when we, when I brought forth all, basically, all department heads and talked to the council about that. So everybody has kind of an annual review, and I brought those forward in October to the council full session. As far as my review, that's covered by this board, and I was part of that process as well.
And so this will happen every October?
That's the way it's supposed to work.
Well, I'm just wanting to be clarified, yes.
I will point out that this has never happened before.
This was the part where my recall wasn't working.
This had never happened before. These questions weren't asked before. There was no evaluation process, there was no job description review process, so this is all new, but it's one that, as long as I'm here, I'll continue on in order to make sure that it's, that we're as effective as we can be. But yeah, this is just in regards to the job descriptions, and doesn't necessarily have to do with performance, but this is how we base whether someone's performing their tasks properly or not, is we look at the job description and say, okay, these are the things you're supposed to be doing. Are you actually doing them? And if so, what level of success are you, are you doing that? There's also a whole nother component that I've implemented as far as performance evaluations in the sense that we set annual goals, but yeah, this is kind of the backbone of what everybody, and it does. And if somebody was to leave, this is how we would post the job advertisement, this is how we recruit people. So if Brenda was to leave, we're not recruiting somebody to take care of the city pound anymore, so.
So I'm just wanting to be reassured that every October, we will have input on what we are presented.
Yeah, and I think the difficulty has been, and it's been this way continually for decades, is that the city has not, had not adopted or followed through on any formal job evaluation procedures for the majority of their employees.
I've only seen piecemeal, which is why I'm trying to be assured that this will follow a pattern.
Yeah, and hopefully, you know, whoever is on the council or whoever's mayor, you know, there's now a record and there's a structure for employee evaluations and employee job descriptions, and that they can continue to follow through. But really, I think it's going to be up to the elected officials to continually, to monitor this plan, because I think that's what has happened in the past, is it's just, it hasn't been, yeah, it hasn't really been modernized and it hasn't been formally structured. And I think you should feel really good about what Al and the city staff have done, and he's done it through all the departments. They've worked hard at doing this, so this is a very good step for the City of Milton and their staff to have this procedure in place. I'm assuming that all the city employees here love this too, right?
No, I was very impressed with how comprehensive they were, and as you noted, how up-to-date they were, so I just thank everyone for all their work in putting them together.
Yeah, just one comment based on Nancy's and Anissa's response is, yeah, from the council's standpoint, the review, the performance review that is, I guess, mandated or dictated by ordinance is really only mine. That's the only person that you have clear authority to review. October, when I brought the department heads, that was at my own discretion, because I wanted to get feedback. So if that is something that you would like to continue to see, that was my intention, but I want to make it clear that there is clear definitions of what role this body has, and that really kind of starts and ends with me, but I brought forth the department heads because I thought it was a valuable part of the process, is from your perspective and from my perspective as well. But yeah, I don't, I don't know how, I don't know how it's been piecemeal, because it never existed before, and now it does exist, so I think there's a pretty clear pattern that existed. Before, there was zero, and now there is something. So I don't know how that's piecemeal, but this process is what it is, and yeah, it's pretty standard.
I was just wondering, and I know that our agenda is actually, speaking of the job descriptions, but we're referencing what you started in October, Al, and I'm just wondering if maybe we need to set a definite, a definite month for everything, and I question October just because of all of our budget workshops. And I don't know if I'm going off of subject or not, so.
Well, you can actually ask for that to be put on a future agenda.
Yeah, and the reason it was October last year is because that was my one year. So if I had been hired in May, it may have been May. You know, that, again, that's where, it made sense for me to kind of, to work with the department heads during that time, because it was getting towards the end of the year, and it also made sense from my perspective, because that's when my one year was up. And based on my contract, which dictates how all these things happen, I was, it was indicated that I would receive an annual review, and that's something that I very much want. And in fact, we talked about it a number of weeks leading up to that point, so yeah, it's something that, believe me, I won't want to go a year without a review. That is something that's important to me, especially, one, it's mandated by contract, but two, it's important to me as well.
I guess what I'm looking for is to establish, as you're saying, whether it is October or July, a set date to do this.
Well, the only, the only thing I would say is that we hope that Al stays for a very long time, but let's say Al doesn't, for whatever reason, and we hire somebody in May, we wouldn't necessarily want to be doing their review in October then. Do you see what I'm saying? So maybe we could put something on the agenda where we would say it's an annual review 12 months from their hire date.
And that's what my contract says, and I would imagine that's what any employment contract would say with any other future administrator. So I think the contract is what governs the kind of, that schedule. Again, the review process that I have internally with employees would be on an annual basis. I can certainly get feedback from the council at any time that you want to provide it to me. It's most valuable to me once I get towards the end of that process, but I think, you know, the date is established by my contract for my review, and it makes sense for me, if we're going to continue the process, where I get feedback from you on the other, on the department heads, that it would come at the end of the year. So that, it's at your kind of discretion within my contract and within the level of oversight that's provided in ordinance, which, again, the ordinances are clear that I provide the evaluation for employees. I brought that forth in October because I thought it was the right thing to do. And again, before that, it had never happened, so.
Mayor, I'm assuming that the discussion relative to reviews is in connection with the job descriptions and the extent to which they facilitate the job review, and so that was, I assume, the sense in which those questions were asked, but then going beyond the actual job review, that would be going beyond the agenda, so it's appropriate to make sure that you're satisfied with these as they facilitate job review process, but then, but as indicated, if you want to get into the job review aspect more, I would suggest that be on another future agenda item.
Okay, I will propose that we, okay, that we approve the revised 2016 City Hall job descriptions as presented.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. I can't believe we're voting on salt. You're killing me. We're never going to get out a winner. Discussion and possible action regarding approval of the 2016-2017 self-purchase agreement.
Okay, if we want to participate in the state's salt bid, we have to have it turned in by the end of April, and so we're still paying a lower price than we paid in 2008 by participating in the state's salt bid. So it's just, it's similar to a contract, so I need council approval to be part of the state bid.
Okay, is there a motion?
I have a motion on the 2017 self-purchase agreement.
There's a motion in a second. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries, and we will have salt for the winter. Yay. Number 12, general items, Linda Go.
I just want to let everybody know that this coming Thursday evening, tomorrow, from 6:30 to 8:30, there is a book launch reception for the book, The Images of Milton, and they are actually going to have a large screen slideshow also. So this is an awesome book. I've looked at mine, and some of the others of you have also, and I would just really encourage you to go and check this out. It's one of our local people and our historical, our historical society, and we should be proud of them. The other item that I was just going to ask is, I'm wondering if we could, in whatever committee you decide should go into, if we could look at our tree replacement and removal ordinance and the fence ordinance. Those were two things that were brought to my attention when I was out speaking to people, and they both, they both make sense. We've got our, for our fence ordinance, we have a limit of six feet, but then a lot of our, a lot of our homes have decks and pools and that sort of thing, and I'm just, you know, it was suggested to me that maybe we raise that a little bit, and I don't know what the statute says about that or anything, so.
We'll refer to Howie to fix it.
Yeah, we can, we can first take a look at it in staff. I mean, I'll likely follow up with you just to make sure we're looking at what the concerns were, but yeah, we can start at there, and then any ordinance revision that comes back comes back to this group, but if it, if it makes sense, especially maybe on the trees aspects, to talk to parks, we can, we can figure that out, but yeah.
Yeah, and with the trees, it's just that we're losing so many trees at this point with the Emerald Ash Bore, and I know that there was a period in time when we lost a lot of elm trees. I just feel like I'm not sure when we started planting different varieties so that we're not losing so much at once, but I just felt like we might need to look at that tree replacement, if it's on the boulevard, who is going to pay for it, who takes it down, so on and so forth.
Okay, thanks. Any other general items? Our next meeting date will be Tuesday, April 19th at 7:00 PM here, and you guys are going to love our team-building exercise, because it goes along with our nature theme. We're going to share what our favorite tree is, and we will start with Howie. Probably doesn't like any trees. You know, you all got to share your favorite tree.
Anyone you can hug, but probably apple trees.
Okay. Mark?
Oh, I'd say red oak.
I'd say maple.
Dave?
Does that ones that are grown here or someplace else?
It doesn't matter. We're a tree-hugging group here.
I like red maple.
Red maple, okay.
Well, I would say the money tree, but I don't think that actually fits. So I, red maple too, yeah, or silver.
I like the oak tree. Like Dave.
I would have to go with palm.
Whipper will.
Nice, yeah.
Sugar maple.
I have to say evergreens, any evergreens.
We have a lot of Ohio State alumni in my family, so I have to say the Buckeye tree.
All second, April, a apple tree.
Lauren?
Any tree that's not on fire? And white birch.
All right, audience.
Colorado Lewis Bruce.
Nice, thank you.
Dead. When planted in the right place, they're all beautiful.
Okay.
Oak.
Oak. The courier always tries to get out of the team building. Inga?
Willow tree.
What do they make the, what do they make the courier out of if it comes from a tree?
Courier tree?
Yes.
Aspen, okay. Aspen. Good job, you guys. Mayor and alderperson reports. We will start with Dave.
Well, I just want to thank everybody that worked for me this year, and I think three unsuccessful candidates should be thanked for entering the parade. I think the fact that we got six candidates and three open this year is an indication of the increased participation of the community and local government. I think it's a healthy sign.
Thank you, Dave. Maxine?
You're skipping a lot of people here.
It's mayor and alderperson.
Okay, all right. I would just like to also thank everybody for their support for my reelection. It's very humbling, and I'm very excited about it. But now, getting back to work, I just want to remind everybody that for the Make a Difference Milton weekend, we're going to be going through the dog park and doing some cleaning and trail repairs and that sort of stuff, so if you're a dog park user or not, and you just want to come out and help us out, feel free to come. And we will have food.
Dog food?
No. No, I think pizza, right?
Three pizzas. First come, first served. You each get a corner.
I must agree, it was wonderful to see a selection of aldermen available for our votes. Gee, there's hope for the future. I mean, it was, it's lonely here. We need more people. Thank you.
Teresa?
Congratulations to the incumbents and to Mr. Halberg. I think that it'll be great to move forward. I'd like to thank everyone for wonderful experience. I've learned a great deal about municipal government that I didn't know before, and I've enjoyed the many discussions about different subjects and activities that have been going on throughout the city and the surrounding areas, so thank you very much.
And I just want to say thank you to Teresa, and Maxine wants us to remind you that you're not done yet. You have a couple more meetings. I just want to thank all of the residents that came out and voted yesterday, because we set so many records, and it was really awesome and exciting and nerve-wracking. we set so many records, and it was really awesome and exciting and nerve-wracking simultaneously. And I also want to thank all of our poll volunteers and Elena for doing a great job, and she did not mess anything up, as far as we know. Everybody that, everybody that got elected is still elected. So, good job, everyone, and, you know, we have a great council, and we got a new member, and it was nice to see all the participation, and I hope anybody that ran and did not get the seat that they wanted will consider running again next time around because we really appreciate the effort and putting yourself out there and getting involved. Okay, and we will go to staff reports. City Administrator?
I would like to echo a lot of the comments that were already made. I don't want to steal any of Elena's thunder when it comes to the election, but 2,100 votes in the City of Milton, that is very impressive and something that we should be proud of as a community. Want to definitely congratulate Dave and Linda for coming back. Want to congratulate Ryan, looking forward to meeting him when he joins us, and also want to thank very much so Teresa for her time on the council with me and even before me. Appreciate all the conversations we've had and all you've done, been very instrumental in the Policy Ad Hoc Committee, and it's been a joy to work with you, and I know we do have a couple more weeks, and we got another Policy Ad Hoc meeting next week, but greatly appreciated. On a couple of other notes, there was two items on the agenda tonight that were on the consent agenda that I do want to point out, and for two very different reasons. The first one was the Charter NEX expansion conditional use permit. I point that out because it's very important that we don't lose track of those types of items. Just so folks are aware, Charter NEX has expanded over 170,000 square feet in the last two years. To put that into perspective, the newest building that was built in Janesville was only 150,000 square feet. So it's important that we don't lose sight of those types of developments as they occur. The employment at Charter NEX has doubled since they started their expansion process. Their investment in the community is fantastic, and all those other communities, all those other businesses that are out there that are growing and expanding, that is economic development, and I don't want folks to lose sight of that. Yes, we all love new buildings, but when folks add to their building and continue to strengthen their footprint in the community, in many ways, that is the best type of economic development, because that means that they have come here and they've seen what type of workforce we have and what type of assistance they can get from the government and from the community. Charter NEX was recently recognized at the MAC Annual Meeting. Their MAC Board members, they're very active in the community, so I just don't want folks to lose sight of those types of investments that are being made in the community. 170,000 square feet in two years is a substantial investment, and that really truly is economic development. It's often the hardest type of economic development, but it's also generally the most fruitful because the investment they make shows that they are here for the long haul. The second item that was on the consent agenda is a much smaller item, but in many ways, I think it goes to speak volumes to the type of staff that we have in our organization, and that's the concession item, or concession stand item. Not a big deal, probably didn't even really, you know, pay much attention to it, but that is one of the just dozens and dozens and dozens of examples that I have seen since I've been here, where our staff is continually looking for ways to save money and do the right thing and reuse what we have without going out and making additional investment. It's something very simple, but it has a profound effect, and it's great to see that that type of ingenuity and open-mindedness and thinking outside of the box exists within our staff. Just last week, got an email from Howie that Donnie had struck a deal to trade our manure spreader, if I remember correctly, for two pieces of equipment that we needed. We could have easily just scrapped that manure spreader, or we could have sold it, you know, probably at half the value that we got in return, but that type of thing is constantly happening. I'm always getting emails from, you know, from Howie telling me about this, or from Lisa telling me about this, things that they're doing to kind of work the edges and make it a little bit better, and it's, those things are small, but it's often the small things that add up to big things, and I just, I just continue to be impressed by that type of out-of-the-box thinking, and just wanted to make sure that that kind of gets highlighted along the way, that folks are doing their best, and they're looking out for the community and what's best, not only for themselves and their position, but what's best for the community, and that is very admirable. So, that's what I have.
Do we have a cornfield that I didn't know about?
We did have. As we call the Public Works Building now.
Okay. Thank you so much, and thanks for those comments, and I couldn't agree more. And our next person up is Chief of the Joint Fire Department.
Well, the study committee had a meeting on the 29th, and unfortunately, did not have enough members attending to really do anything, so we adjourned, and we will be meeting next Wednesday night, the 13th, at 6 o'clock at the fire station to continue on the process, and we hope that we can get enough members there this time to do it. We also, last night, had one of our members in, living in the City of Janesville, sustained a house fire that destroyed his piece of property, and he, everybody was safe, everybody got out okay, but his house is no more, and so if there's anyone that would like to make a donation to help the family recover from this, we do have a collection going at the fire station that we would accept contributions for. Pretty much lost all of their clothes and all of their belongings in the lower floor, so it's pretty devastating for the family.
I'm really sorry to hear that. Is there an account, or does one of the local banks have an account to write checks out to?
They have not started one yet, but it's apparently going to be started this week yet. They were pretty overwhelmed with everything, so.
Okay, thanks. I'm sorry to hear that. That's awful. Chief of the Police Department?
Myself and two Lieutenant Chesmore and Officer Schneider all had an opportunity to give back and provide some assistance to Janesville Police Department when Mr. Trump came to town. We asked Janesville and our neighboring law enforcement agencies for a lot of help, and the larger agencies especially have provided a lot to us, and when they asked, I couldn't say no. So, it was a long day, and by most accounts, it was a very successful day from a law enforcement perspective, and we were pretty proud to be part of it. So, kudos to my two partners that day. We put in quite a day, but it went pretty well. Since the last time we've met, we've had the opportunity to do some EAP training with our staff and providing information to them from our EAP coordinator on the benefits that they have available to them. That's one of my priorities, is to make sure my employees know areas of support that they have when they need it, and hopefully that, I think the level of benefit available to them came as a surprise to some of the employees, so I'm glad we spent time doing that. We are in the middle of training and pushing out our body camera policy to the officers and hope to deploy within a week. So I know I've been talking about that here for months, and we finally overcame some hurdles and some challenges, and we're going to get them out in the field, so I'll sure be entertaining questions, and I want to talk with Becky after the meeting to maybe get an article out, too, so. That's all I got.
Thank you. City Clerk, Deputy Treasurer?
Okay, so yesterday, there was an election, as everyone is aware. We had an extremely high turnout, 64% turnout, and we had 283 new Election Day registrations, so we were extremely busy. We did, I did only split the poll books twice, which proved to be a little problematic, so we had to quickly split them into three, and then our Public Works Department was very quick in responding to our request for more tables, and so really, this election in particular, out of all the ones I've done here, was a group effort. We had, we were a little short on election officials, just because it was spring break type time, so city staff had to work, most of them to into the night, but I absolutely could not have covered lunch breaks or dinner breaks without everybody from City Hall pitching in as well.
I was amazed to see how many poll workers worked 13-hour shifts. It was incredible. I was here last night until about 7:45, and I know there was at least two people that were here when I came in and voted that morning at 7:40, so 12 hours later, they were still here and working. That's impressive, and we have a great group. We were talking about it at lunch day, we all had lunch together, and we've got a great group of poll workers, I mean, some really outstanding people, and staff, Leanne and Elena, you know, that's a big task. One thing that we wanted to keep an eye on yesterday was the parking situation out front, and we did it a little bit different this time than we had in the years past, and from the 2099 voters that we came through, we only had one person that, one confirmed kind of complaint, I guess, for lack of a better term, and their complaint wasn't because of lack of parking, their complaint was that the parking just wasn't close enough. So I thought it went really well in that regard, and that was Maxine. But we were very concerned that the November election, we may need to move polling places, and we talked about it today, and I don't, if we have a repeat of that, and there's not 16 inches of snow out there come November 4th or whenever, I think we should be, I think hopefully we'll be okay.
Yeah, and city staff made accommodations. They didn't park in the parking lot, and poll workers made accommodations, so really it was totally centered around voters yesterday, and that was great to see. Thank you very much. Director of Public Works?
Couple new items, while they're coming up. The cemetery cleanup is April 18th, so people should go out there and get rid of what they don't want thrown, you know, pretty much thrown away what's left out there. Surplus sale items, April 27th, they're down at the city garage, but April 27th is the last day to put a bid in on it. It's pretty much a silent auction of a deal. And then the well, the well project should start the end of April. Other water projects have started. Yard and brush waste, or the yard waste and the brush are still going to continue through the end of the month, so. And Lisa's going to talk about the library, the guys have been up there helping tear stuff down and remove things, so.
Director of the library, do you have anything going on over there?
Too much. You know, talk about an impressive staff work. We knew we had to get out of the first floor by the 11th, by the 8th of April, and they went above and beyond to make sure that we didn't have to close very long for the public, that we had a good setup for the library in the basement. So in eight days, about 26 volunteers, an awesome work from DPW and amazing work from our library staff, we moved the entire library out, and that was about 600 boxes, yeah, 350 of which are in the storage unit in the back parking lot, a lot of shelving, and it was really a timely event because we were able to give a lot to the surplus that we won't be using in the new library. So it all worked out super well. We opened, we're calling ourselves the Library Underground, so we've had a lot of people come in, so we're hoping people will continue to come in. We're going to have the same kind of services as before. The school district has very generously offered us their large group area to do programming. In the summertime, we have programming every day. We don't have any room downstairs, so people can just walk across the grass and go to programs over there. Felt kind of bad about our new children's librarian having to help with the move and then basically work and live in a basement for eight months, but she's super good-natured about it, and everybody has a positive attitude, and we're doing really well. Couple things I want to bring out, we do have, we're still going to have our book sale. We see about $2,500 a year we have raised for the book sale, and that's going to be at Milton's Community House starting April 22nd. Also, we are collaborating with the Milton High School with a literacy club, and the first meeting of that is on April 13th after school, and it's a chance for people to, students to talk with each other about writing, books they've enjoyed, and to kind of do some peer editing to of their work, so.
Awesome, thank you. Dan? I only printed two pages. Whatever's on page three, we're waiting on. Dan?
It's just me, and then a journey. Last week, we had the city's annual audit on top of everything else that was going on around, it's just last week, they just left seven days ago. But city hall staff did a good job of kind of letting me take care of the last bits and pieces the last few days, and especially while they were here, so everything went really well. One minor entry, and that was about it.
Good job, that's good to hear.
And all the financial reports I showed you guys pretty much held true in terms of where we are with fund balance. With the decision tonight, it'll take it down a little bit, but it also eliminates liability that was also showing in the financial statement, so.
Yeah, great. All right. I'm told the next item is a motion to adjourn.
You'll never know.
We're going. There's a motion in a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you very much, and thank you to our audience.